Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to council Monday, May twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Call me two hundred and four P M. As always, just remind you to turn off your mobile devices and put them on vibration mode. I have an emotion here to look at the agenda for today. So I'm asking council, do you have hereby accept the agenda for Monday, twenty seventh of May? As amended or circulate any conditions in relation to the agenda? Over. Second, council leader. All in favor? Thank you. Any declaration of interest today? Hearing them, I have a motion here that council hereby accepts and approves the minutes of the regular media council or imposed media council held on Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, circuit amended. Move by. Second, council leader, any areas or missions in those minutes? Do you want to call a question all in favor? Kerry, thank you. This afternoon, we have a couple of delegations to present to council. First up, we have Mr. Edwin Severance. He's in attendance today to discuss issues around the boating launch fees for town marathon. Good afternoon, Edwin. Come on down. Yeah, please. Good afternoon.
Afternoon. Thanks, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to have a little conversation here today or be able to speak, but I'm trying to stick with this. It won't be nowhere near ten minutes. It will be nice and fast. But I stand here for you today, not just as a concerned citizen, but a voice from many in our community who feel unheard in the wake of recent user fee increases for our municipal boat launch facility. This facility is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our volunteers, has long been a symbol of our collective spirit and commitment to the accessible outdoor recreation. The decision to increase fees made with what appears to be a lack of consultation and transparency has not only caused frustration, but also a sense of betrayal. The facility we built on the backs of volunteers has been taken over without input. The new fees set a concerning precedence. At twenty six dollars a year or one fifty two per the season, we are not only out of step within the facilities alone like Superior, but also risking turning both locals and visitors from utilizing what should be a communal asset. Our mayor has stated that we cannot compare our facility with other marinas, yet it is the very comparison that highlights the deficiencies we face. A lack of basic marine facilities and the ability to safely dock overnight. How can we justify these fees when they do not correlate with the services provided? I heard that the issue lies not in concept of fees themselves, but in the value for money and the principle of being heard. Many officials elected on the promises of promoting accessible outdoor facilities now seem to overlook the voices they once sought to represent. The economic implications are clear. Why would visitors choose our facility when a more affordable and better equipped option exists within a short drive? We risk not only a loss to tourism, but also a missed opportunity to diversify our economy through increased usage of the boat launch. We propose a collaborative approach, working with council to develop a plan that balances the need for operational fees with the goal of encouraging expanding use by both residents and visitors. Thus, find a solution that reflects the value of our town and the needs of our community. Also, the few deficiencies make this more of an issue, more troublesome. I've sent an email with the issues we are seeing with the new launch, but the promise to have the repairs completed in the spring, which hasn't happened as of yet. The new launch is too far from the dock. The material between the sections has washed away, and larger boats actually drive off the end of launch. The second launch ends at the water's edge, leaving no ramp for your trailer, which was done by design. Both launches are on level, and it makes it difficult to load your boat evenly on the trailer. I can contest for the last twenty or so years before the town took over. The docks were installed with volunteers and a twenty dollar donation to help us with minor repairs. We keep hearing there were no volunteers, and that's why the town took it over, whether there was volunteers, and we got it done year after year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, thank you very much for those reviews in regards to the boat launch and from the boating community. And I'll ask council quickly if they have any questions, Mr. Severance, before we move forward. Counselor Lake?
Yeah, I have some. So I guess what I'm hearing is the voters felt like they weren't heard. So I maybe we need to do a better job when we do fees and charges because we do that at a public meeting. I wonder too, like, maybe this is maybe just a question. I think it's a good idea to do a collaborative approach, but you know, there's two ways to pay for things if you're a municipality, right? Like, we're not a company. It's taxation or user fees. And so I guess what I'm hearing is it's not the user fees, it's the amount of the user fees. Finding that balance between either having non-voters pay for it or having the users pay for it, and somewhere in there, there's a ground that would help everybody.
Fifty to a hundred percent increase year after year, too, right? Like, we just started out three years ago with sixty, then we were at a hundred. This year, you wanted two hundred, but you guys managed to get it down to one fifty.
Okay, so Mr. Severance, we're not going to debate.
I was like, yeah, I'm just gonna ask a question.
I guess I'm just saying, like, what I'm hearing is it's not the fact of user fees. It's the amount. And I feel like that's really the way the process is supposed to work, right? Like, I just, I don't know about anybody else, but man, it's hard to be a council now because you, if you don't stay off Facebook, people can get mad and say all kinds of stuff, right? But this is the process. I really appreciate that you, you know, reached out individually. I got some really emails with lots of good facts. Now you're here representing the group. And I do feel like, like, you're right. There's, we agree that there's going to be user fees. Let's work together so that the voters feel like they're heard. Somebody once said voters are voters, so that's important. But I just think, like, what I like is that's the process, and I really do appreciate you coming here, like, contacting us and then coming here. And also, like, I would say, Council Leader has been a real advocate for especially lake access. And I recall back to our debate, you were the voice who said we can't go too high. So I just, I would point out that there are councillors who have been really good voices for that. So would be happy to part of that. I think if we maybe sent back to administration and asked for a report to have better data, and then I'd certainly be happy to sit down with anybody and do that collaborative approach to find, agreeing on user fees, I use.
Anybody else? So thanks, Mr. Severance. I think Mr. Lake, Council Lake, has summarized it pretty clearly that, you know, we always want listeners to the public, and this is an open public process through the user fees every year in December. We have open public process through the budget every year. Public's welcome to come and give input on any aspect of the municipal budget, reverse operationals or fees and charges. So as Council Lake identified, we will ask administration to take a little look at what those fees are, if they're suitable within the budgetary needs of the municipality. I think you hit it right on the head in regards to the fact that we have to have user fees to offset those costs to taxpayers within the community, so that it makes it fair and equitable for everybody. So today's presentation you did was great. Identify some of the weaknesses maybe that we didn't see, but also want to make it very clear. This council has always been open and accessible to all residents of this community, and we listen to the community in regards to what we set forward, but we have to make tough decisions. Sometimes tough decisions don't always necessarily being heard by the community for the betterment of all of us within the community. So thanks for that. We will definitely have a discussion and hopefully we'll, we'll have some opportunity to talk with administration of whether or not there's something we can do within those fees, but based on the information you provided. And I just share with you, you know, making a list of some deficiencies. We're always open to see identifying those concerns. And I think our manager of operations will definitely be listening to some of those things and working with the group that they can be done and fixed. Thank you.
And just wondering, maybe if we could, as we do that process, keep Mr. Severance in the loop, so that you feel, you see the progress of the conversation.
Well, we'll ask with administration, bring a report back for the next council meeting. How's that? Fair. We'll have a discussion and see what that looks like. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Neil.
Cheers.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. Okay, next we have delegation in regards to Generation Mining. It's intense. Give us an update on the Marathon P G M copper, palladium, platinum project. And I think we have Jamie Levy, president of the company, Drew Atwell. Is also coming down or? Okay, so we'll let Jamie introduce all the key members of the committee and the team. Welcome to Marathon. We had a great opportunity to have an open house today as well as speak with Mr. Preston Robinson, CFO. So good to see that.
Announcing the boat launch. That'd be great.
Thank you, councillors. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having us. Just learning. Anyways, thank you for having us. We'll try to keep it short and sweet. You know, speak to the mayor once in a while and a few other people in the community, and you know, we just want to get out in front of the town marathon and the residents and people in the surrounding area that this project is going ahead. We're optimistic of this project. There's a few catalysts that we're working on, and we'll talk about that soon, but you know, we're very confident that this project is going to go ahead with the commodity mix that we have palladium and copper, our permitting schedule. If you could just put us slide three, if that's okay.
Two?
That's fine. But just who we are, if you see Generation Mining or Generation P G M, it's the same thing, just for the people in the community. It's a sub of Generation Mining. Generation Mining is a publicly traded company. Where our head office is, obviously, we have an op two offices in Marathon. We have one in Toronto as well. And if you can just go to the next slide, I don't need to get into that too much. Sorry about that. I haven't read this yet. Anyways, just what we're looking towards is we're looking to, obviously, we have a sustainability team. We do have Jeremy Darn as our manager of sustainability. I'll see most of the town marathon. Most of you know him. He's working with our V P's, Billy, Ruben, Walden over here. They take environment very seriously and our relationships with the First Nations and our communities around here. Obviously, you know, you can read the rest of that here, but we are trying to operate responsibly, and we are trying to work with communities and industry around us to make sure that we're building a better economy for everybody. And what is important to me, and I think I said it to Al earlier, is that you know, we're Toronto based, we're Canadian. We really want this project to go ahead. We are getting some of the politicians and some of the government officials to make this project a priority. We are jumping ahead of some of the other projects in the area that might be gold or non-critical metals. And it's nice to see that people are actually trying to support critical metals because the majority of the critical metals are produced in China and Russia, and even in South Africa. And so to have something in our backyard is great to have. The next slide, you know, if you just, I don't know, it's tough for me to see it, but you know, there's only one other P G M project in Canada, which is Black to Seal. North American palladium was sold to Empala. I don't know how much mine life is left in that one, but you know, I hear it could be two, three, maybe five years, but they're getting to the end of their mine, so this would be the only palladium project in Canada. You know, just at that instant of some of the projects that are around here, Equinox is just got finished building, built, I believe, and they just had their start. Magino should be done soon, and Cote just off the, off the map there in the southeast got finished as well. So there's a good construction force available for us to do it for building. You know, we all, everyone knows where we are, but Drew, just want to talk about some of the project components.
Sure. It's a, it's a pretty straightforward. It's an open pit operation. It's got three open pits. And it's sized to be a fair sized operation, but not a, not a huge operation, so it's a decent size. It's got a processing plant where we make a copper concentrate that's high in P G Ms, and we'll, we'll sell that to a for the processor. Primarily, it, we're targeting one in, one in Canada and one likely overseas. And we also have a tailings bond. We'll use high density tails. It'll be thickened tails. And the good thing about the construction is it's all on bedrock, so it's very solid. We've gone through a rigorous design. In fact, the group that designed it, probably designed it about four times over, so we're fairly comfortable with the design. And it's gone through a numerous level of review. And again, as you know, the area, we've got a site access road. We'll use the Camp nineteen road to get to the site for the construction, and then down the road, we'll put a, an alternate access to site. So it's a pretty compact footprint for the project. We do have two transmission lines that, that pass over the property. The first one we'll use for the construction is a four megawatt line that'll come up Camp nineteen road. That'll be construction power. Then we have the M two W line, the one that crosses, that'll give us in winter about fifty two, and then in summer about fifty eight megawatts. And then future down the road, when we get to about ten million tons through the processing plant, we'll, we have plans to tie into the main transformer station here. So the design is, is, is well mapped out already. And also, it's, it's a bit interesting because the site is on the top of the hill, but there's an awful lot of designs we put into water management. So when Jamie spoke about sustainability, it, it drives a lot of the decisions and an awful lot of the designs we have. We know that we're not in the middle of nowhere. We're, we're in B N's backyard, and we're in your front yard. So it's a, it's a level of respect that we don't take like, that we don't discount.
Thank you. So just as you can see here, this first bullet point is it's a copper palladium project. So the narrative is somblicating change from palladium to copper, copper now to palladium. A lot of interest in copper these days. Copper has traded from, you know, three fifty last year upwards of five dollars a pound. It is in strong demand right now. There's a lack of supply out here. This project, our project, has over a billion pounds of copper in reserve, resource, about half a billion pounds in reserve. Meaning that right now economically, we have half a billion pounds, but with today's higher prices, we could have potentially more copper. And a lot of people have been speculating on the price of copper and believe it's going to go much higher. I would have to agree with them. They're saying in the next twenty five-ish years, they need to produce more copper than has ever been produced in his life, entire life since the beginning of civilization. Some people are saying it's double. So we know it's not going to happen, this electric vehicle rollout. So a lot of the demand for palladium. For those of you that don't know, it's in the internal combustion car. It's in the catalytic converter. And so I think we're in that transition that B E Vs certainly aren't going to work in the north, and they're certainly not going to work in the south, but they don't have enough charging stations. So the palladium is going to be around for a lot longer, whether it's in the long range hybrid vehicle or this is straight hybrid vehicle. So I think we have the perfect mix of commodities here. Copper is a critical metal. Palladium is kind of a critical metal, depending on what version of the government. So we're, we're kind of checking all the boxes here, and I think that the supply of some of the palladium mines right now, where the price of palladium are not making money, so they're going to shut down, so the price is going to go up higher. So I think we're in a kind of an aha moment right now, a very sweet spot for palladium and certainly for copper. Just some of the highlights. Sorry, you know, a second here. We did arrange a couple of years ago a stream of weed and precious metal, the largest streaming company and royalty company in the world now. We've arranged two hundred and forty million dollars. We've drawn down of forty million, another two hundred billion Canadians coming on construction. We do have mandate letters with senior lenders, which are some of the best mining banks in the world, and Stock Gen, I N G, and Export Development Corporation in Canada. We're waiting to get definitive documents with them, but those four groups from weed to the three banks validates this project, the technical expertise that has been done. They're very critical of projects, and to get them to accept everything that we've done is a huge validation for this project. Government in Canada, you guys probably remember the E A process that Drew and Ruben and Jeremy South group for, seems like a year, lost all of Drew's hair, but needless to say, he survived. And we got the E A. We also got our community benefit agreement with Victagon a couple of weeks earlier. So it's nice to have the support from the federal and provincial governments and the E A and Victagon. And now we've gone to the provincial permits. Ruben will talk about that soon. But just to go back to our A six here, which is all, all in sustaining cash costs for palladium equivalents just over eight hundred dollars an ounce. So palladium's, you know, a thousand, eleven hundred dollars is still profit today. Copper equivalent being a common project to these prices. Copper is at five, six dollars a pound, and you can see what the copper equivalent is. So this is a project that merit, and very excited to be a part of it. Back to you, Drew.
So what we're doing right now is we are advancing the permitting. We are advancing the financing. And we're also taking the opportunity to optimize the design. So we're working with a group that, that's very good at construction. So we're looking on making the designs more efficient, including that full lifecycle of procurement through to the construction phase. And we're also evaluating, so we've got three different pits here. The, the north pit, that little pink thing on the, on the top side, that goes for the life of the mine, goes for about thirteen years. And the smaller pits to the south are staged in different timing. So what we're looking at is can we get a smaller pit to start with that really brings that revenue as far forward in those first five years of production? And so in addition to the design and the plant optimization, we're also looking at the, the different evaluations for the pit sequencing that would, that would make, make sense for us. So we will do some of the, the detailed engineering along with that optimization. And in addition to that, we've also had the opportunity this year to do exploration. It's a fairly small program, about a three million dollar program that we've targeted three areas. We've had a news release out on one of them. That's just to the north and to the west of the north pit. We had some very interesting results, early days yet, and then we'll have some, some drilling at Sally and Fordams. And, and again, of that area, what we're targeting is, we want to show the market that there's, there's a lot of copper potential here. So that's a T P D. We should, we should see more releases coming out soon. And maybe I'll hand over to Ruben, and he can walk through some of the permitting slides and where we are with that. Thanks, Drew. So so just, just to recap a little bit, and Jamie and Drew have talked about it. So, you know, there's sort of three work streams, right? The, the financing work stream. There's this technical work stream, and there's been a few technical report updates that Drew's led, and this optimization work on capital now. And then the third is obviously approvals work stream, right? And so, you know, we talk, we talk about these work streams. I'll just make it clear, like, so since twenty twenty, we've been working on all these work streams, right? This, this project's the only egg in our basket. We think about it every day. So I know the town and folks don't hear about us every day. But just like you guys get up and go to work and do your jobs every day, this is what we're doing every day, and we're trying to drive this project. So it's not, even though you haven't heard from us, it hasn't, hasn't been sitting on a back burner for nine months, and now we're dusting it off. Every day, we're pulling on the rope, trying to get it financed, designed and permanent, so it's shuttle ready to build, right? So we started the environmental impact assessment process for this version of the project back in twenty twenty. And I worked with Jamie and Drew on that initially, and then Jeremy subsequently. It took till November of twenty twenty two to get the environmental assessment approved. So about a three-year process from the time we started that work to get the approval. And a couple of key things the town might be interested in. In that approval, there's a number, there's three hundred and seventy one separate federal E A conditions, and we have about the same under the provincial approval. And then we'll have a bunch in permit. So Jeremy will have like over a thousand conditions, legally required conditions to manage. But with respect to the town, things will come, will be coming to the town about, right? Like, working with you guys on your emergency preparedness and response plan, and maybe some joint work with, with those folks and the fire department and those things. There's some synergies coming there. There'll definitely be some socioeconomic stuff we want to talk to the town about. I reviewed the strategic plan that you shared with me last year. And whether that's in areas around healthcare or boat launches or other things, the town will have some ideas, and there's certainly some synergies with us building the mine this close and, and some of the socioeconomic effects, positive and potentially negative, that'll have on the town, and we can work through that. So that's to come. And that will unfold as we get through this process. So, but, but much more on the positive side than the negative, and we'll get through that. So I'm happy to have that conversation with the town in the future. So we've got the impact assessment. So what happens next? You don't get to build the mine right away. You have to go get permits. So this, this is some of the things that occupy Jeremy's time during the day, amongst other stuff that he's doing. So there's, there's like eleven major approvals that we need. We have six of them now received, some provincial, some federal. And we're well advanced on receiving the second, the remaining five. So there's two federal approvals to go. They're fairly lengthy approvals through Environment Canada and Fisheries and Oceans. So we're working with them. And then the other ones are through the Ministry of Environment and M N R F, right? So we very much appreciate the support the town's given us at various times in the permitting process because it's, it's been material to us getting those permits and moving it forward. And we appreciate the way the town has also worked in collaboration with, with the First Nations indigenous communities because they are consulted on all the permits as well, and that harmonious relationship is, is very important for government to be able to regulate easily. As we all know, when governments faced with making complicated decisions, they, they, they have staff shortages and can't show the meeting. So those sorts of things can happen from time to time. But so that's, that's kind of where we're at on the process. We continue to have good relations with the indigenous groups, and, and we continue to proceed on. And so our target is to have all permits in hand sort of in the second half of this year. Or late Q three, early Q four, if things go well. So that's kind of our idea.
So as Ruben was mentioning earlier, you know, we had three buckets. There's a fourth bucket. He forgot to continue the property expiration. But, you know, we've talked about the permitting. We've talked about the project financing. You know, we're looking to get some critical metal like from the federal, provincial governments or private equity to be fully financed sometime later on this year. Once we get the fully, the permits, as I mentioned to somebody earlier, field dreams, building, they will come, and hopefully getting all the permits, then all of our investors will, will follow us as well. So, you know, we're looking to optimize the projects. We're supporting from buckets. So I know there's some skeptics out there, maybe in the town here. Elsewhere, this project is moving ahead. We're not sitting on our hands. We're actively pursuing getting to, as Drew likes to call it, a sanctioning event, where we can actually start to build, and we're trying our best to do it as fast as we can. Obviously, as the first couple of slides, making sure that we don't cut any corners, making all the relationships, environment, sustainability, take care of all of that, and try to have a project that's going to last not for thirteen years with expiration hopefully involved on that as well. But just want to thank you all for allowing us to come. And if there's any questions from anybody in the town or around, please email or call me at any time. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, gentlemen. Is there any questions quickly of the team? Counselor Lake?
Thank you guys for coming. You brought up about water management. I believe in one of your presentations, you said before about recycling water. Could you just, is that something you guys are going to be doing on site? Can we tackle that? Or you want to tackle?
You can talk to it or? Yeah, so what we talk about? Water management on any operation is something you have to control. So with a tailings or a process solids management facility, there's water that gets tied up in the, in that pond. So when you, when you process, and in our process, we grind it quite fine. So there's water that gets entrained with that. So as opposed to having to go to different sources and take water from other sources, we changed our designs through the original feasibility study where we added additional water management structures, and that really allows us to take that processed water and separate it from the tailings as best we can, store it in there, and bring that back to the plant. So with any operation, depending on the climatic conditions, it'll either be net positive or net negative. And you don't want one that's overly positive or overly negative. So the water management structures that we put in place allow us to have that, that freeboard, that up and down. And I can't tell you exactly how much freeboard we have, but it's an order of magnitude of a couple of months. So if we have a heavy rainstorm, we can manage that water on site. If we have low water, we'll manage that water on site. So that's really what our water recycling is about. That, that's for operational efficiency. That's what adult operations have to do. The second thing is the more water you recycle, that you don't have to take from the environment. That's a better management system for everything. So it's, it's an interesting, like, as you can tell, I've, I've got no air, and I've got a bit of experience doing these things. So by gaining that experience and understanding what the operation will be, it allows you to make a better operation. So historically, where there was multiple feasibility studies, multiple designs in the various iterations of this project, there was a lot of really good work that's been done. And again, because of the experience that we have and the, and the team has, we've been able to improve on a lot of those things. And, and your question, water recycling, is one of those big ones.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Counselor Lake.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, and I think about the relationship you're building with indigenous communities, and, and those groups have this real spiritual connection to the land. It makes total sense. But as a resource extraction town, I mean, I think the experience that most folks from Marathon is like, we're not named after planes where the Greeks fought the Xerxes, right? We're named after the Marathon Open Paper Company. And I think for lots of us, companies come and do things to us. You know what I mean? It's been this imposition of decision-making models that are outside of our, outside of our neighborhood, but coming to do things. What I appreciate is you being here. I feel like that hasn't always been the case as industry has come and worked with the resources in the area. And I'm just wondering, you know, as we hopefully get to that sanctioning event, what's the model or relationship to ensure that we're doing this thing together? And, and again, that the working class folks in the town don't feel like things are being done to them. That's kind of a.
So, yeah, so I think, I think that's, it's a great question, and I think that's a discussion we can have with the town going forward. You know, I was involved with a project in Quebec that was a large open pit right next to the town. I mean, it was a redevelopment of an underground. I mean, it, it was a redevelopment of an underground mining. You may know the project. But, um, and so, uh, in fact, uh, the town, uh, uh, set up a committee that was made of, uh, some counselors and other folks from the town. Um, and, uh, the company met, uh, through that mechanism. And, uh, and, and sort of set out a plan on how they wanted to go forward in that relationship. So, uh, that was one model. I think there's other models that, that we can explore, right? Um, but certainly, uh, it's not, I, as I said, you know, as Drew said, uh, we're in your front yard. We, we know in fact, the, 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 the mine sits within the, the limits of the town, right? So that's not lost on us. So I think that that's a relationship we, and how we do that going forward is, is one we'll have.
Certainly Ruben, I, I think Counselor Lake's been a council long enough to remember that we had a committee set up with, uh, Marathon called M P G M. So it's the Water Canada. And no different than your group when we met originally in 2019, we talked about the community benefit agreement, how that would look and how we move forward as a community and company to corporate citizen and working together. So we've almost, those checkmarks have been identified, which you've got to sit down and discuss what's other thing for the corporate citizen and community.
And we've done some thinking on that mayor, uh, around what our values are and the things that we're interested in as a company supporting. Um, and I suspect that some of those will overlap with some of the things the town's interested in doing. So I think there could be some good, some nice synergies on those pieces. But of course we're open to any, 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 any conversation the town would like to have.
Kind of at the time, I got a couple of quick questions if you don't mind. And I, and I know that President, Mr. Levy and I had conversations around that community benefit agreement. Was it a play with, with Drew as well? So we were all on top of that, Counselor Lake, and we'll continue to focus on that. Uh, reading a little bit of, just recently, I know you talked about one of your slides talking about the relationship you have with Canadian provincial governments and funding this project. The U S military funded some, uh, some aluminum extraction back end, you know, World War II era. And funded mineral minings and looking at doing that again, looking at right now just a project in Quebec for a $15 million grant. So with the Americans coming in through the military, and there's a, there's a special program through the American government, through the military to do the funding. But they're looking at opportunities for more and more projects versus critical minerals field. Where's our government in regards to those type of promotional things? Not just talking about low, but it has small programs, but are they announcing or looking at any bigger opportunities through funding of critical minerals? There's a lot of this going on, uh, about how important critical minerals are, but where is the dollars going, if any?
Um, we're in discussions with the federal government, uh, provincial government. I think they just initiated, was it a 50 billion C M I?
Fifty million.
Fifty million. Billion upwards. Sorry.
Billion would be.
Yeah, billion. No, no, sorry. Uh, and I think it's upwards of half a million dollars per company. So not some change, but not great, but, um, we'll look to, to talk to them about that. And there's some other federal funding. Obviously the D O D, the U S government has a lot more funding than does the Canadian government. Uh, we're looking to get in there as well. Um, they've been looking for critical metals and unfortunately copper wasn't part of the critical metals. It was cobalt and lithium and a few other ones. And I think copper might have finally got in there. I don't know if it's made it in there yet, but it's not part of the strategic metal list quite yet.
Okay. One other question that I think you, you mentioned about the fact that the, the, the company is doing a continual expression drilling. And that's good news for the community. Anytime you're drilling, that's good news for expansion of any project, right? So we're looking forward to those results. But I liked your idea when you said about starting off with a smaller phase pit and moving up, building it up and getting the mine potentially there. But Ruben had mentioned about the permitting is the key aspect. And all along we've worked with the company in regards to issues with government and permitting. So again, I really want to reemphasize that if there's any opportunities that you need us to talk, uh, to government, uh, for those permits to get a look, not, not, you know, just speed up the process a bit. Cause government said clearly that they're, are all about fast tracking permits in the regulatory process, but not so they're sitting on somebody's desk.
You've been very helpful, Mayor. Thank you very much.
You too, Derek. Thank you. No, I think in, in all of my thoughts, I've been a hundred percent behind the project. But again, that's just one of those things where sometimes we're just a small pea in the pod. But the bigger players that need to have awareness, how it impacts the economic, uh, opportunities for all of us. I'm sure not just our community and our First Nations neighbors, but all of us, right?
And, and to Counsel, if I could, Mayor, to Counselor Lake's questions, we acknowledge that one. You guys have been a great supporter of us. We, we don't have an agreement, but we have that level of trust that when we get, when we, when we make this a business, when we make it go, uh, that relationship will last. So we appreciate your support up to this point and, uh, you can expect our support.
So I appreciate you showing up at Marathon, giving some of your project and the port. And we've always had an open dialogue and relationship as well, but it's good to have the community here, the project's progression and going forward. And they have some opportunity now to understand where, where it is and how it unfolds in the, in the regulatory process. Because it has been frustrating from time to time.
Hey. Hopefully.
If it was easy, anybody would be doing it.
Absolutely. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good hearing. Thanks. Okay. Up next we have, new counselor report. Counselor Redd.
Yeah. So I guess I'll be coming on for, uh, Counselor Kishan as well.
Sure.
Doing sports. Okay. So this week, uh, our boys soccer, they, uh, won in Wawa. So they're going to Kenora.
Pretty good.
Which, uh, brings up an issue with buses that our schools have for, uh, quite a few years now. Cause I've been there for quite a while. I've seen it firsthand. Uh, often we can't get buses and parents are forced to drive. So I think right now we have about five parents driving a whole team of kids to Kenora, which is nine hour drive. It's not nothing. Uh, and bus companies have been issued, whether it be funding or not being available. So I think for the first time I gotta ask, is there anything council or administration could do to help us out there? Whether it be with funding, uh, getting access to buses, working with the different company, or even just setting an own, our own bus thing for the school?
So we can ask that question if you're done your report.
Oh yeah. One more, I guess for my own. Uh, we are also continuing fundraising for our graduation and prom. I think early June, our most recent, uh, fundraiser will be a car wash with more details being posted on Facebook.
So any great, any questions of Counsel Redd? So I do have a couple. So when you ask if the municipality can support in any way monetarily, I think the first avenue is to go back to the Board of Education and ask them where they are in this game. Cause you are a student at the high school and this is a inter-school event, I'm assuming. Inter, inter-school in other different districts, but it's an inter-school event. And why aren't they looking at providing the services through their, their funding model? And I know they're working on a strategic plan. We just got an update on their new strategic plan going forward. Then now we need to speak with the, the Director of Education about, uh, programs within the schools and affecting students and, and, you know, how does that benefit not just the education on academically level, but as well as your extracurricular activities? So I haven't read the full draft of the strategic plan going forward yet, but, uh, it's an interesting document that maybe there's an opportunity to have some discussion from the student bodies to, uh, to maybe back to the Directors of Education saying, here's some of the things we see that should be incorporated maybe in your strategic plan going forward. Just an idea. But the municipality kind of stays at arm's length in regards to that. So that would be, uh, and I can't speak for those at council, but I would assume it would be a specific request from a student body for a contribution for whatever that might look like. In this case, sounds like you've got some, some parents paying the, the fee for the gas. So I'm not sure how that works for, absolutely.
And to talk to Mr. Redden, it, it wasn't so much a financial, uh, support as it is, how does one attract a, a, a small business or someone who might be able to offer that service or a Thunder Bay company that might have a bus here, right? It's a, it's one of those, uh, like I know lots of folks travel, uh, and it's, it's a hard thing to get, right? Certainly every time we have to go down, it's a, it's.
It's the accent.
Sort of thing. That's what sort of like Counselor Redden and I were speaking, it was kind of in that sense. How, how does one go about doing that?
So interesting you asked that question because I, I think I did a presentation class last year in regards to entrepreneurship and leadership. And I found that there wasn't a whole lot of people looking at entrepreneurship going into the business sector from at least that class anyway. So, so some 31 students and maybe 28 were not looking so much at going to any kind of entrepreneurial society. So, uh, that is just driven by business, right? I think Counselor Sukie just made mentions about demand. Uh, we, we had hard at times struggling to have a daily bus service run through our communities. That, that was shut down completely because there was no usage of that. So, you know, a couple of busing, one company came forward and set up a small road and then the government, don't forget now, Terra Northland is not, it's, it's a subsidized, dramatically subsidized by the Ontario government to come through our community. So the overall, I think, uh, Northland subsidy is around $40 million of Ontario taxpayers' dollars. Top said, not only the busing roads, but they have a train road that goes in the northern part of the province. So, so without, without government subsidies, that northern, northern bus road would not run, northern, uh, Northland would not run. Casper has been asking for subsidies as well. He's been managing it on his own, but it's a struggle. I've talked to him as well in Thunder Bay and that he's struggling. So let alone getting a charter system to go forward and bringing the students to a certain location. Can't even have a ridership, uh, usage that's adequate enough to make a business model. So. Uh, if you need a letter of support, we're always there. But unless there's some avenue that you can take in regards to school board looking at some sort of, uh, uh, program. And maybe there is, maybe you're working with Southland and having additional fee. Because I don't know if the fee would be dramatically as high as from Southland as it would be for, uh, a, a commercial setup. So that would just maybe ask a driver who would go for two, I'm assuming two to three days for this, uh, event. You know, that's wages and some gasoline, right? Would, may not be as high as a commercial, uh, atmosphere, uh, program. So I don't know what the answer, uh, we don't have an answer for you. How's that?
I mean, I'm not an athlete, so I can't really speak with them. It's more of a covering for them there. But, I mean, I, all my friends are kind of through the sports scene. I've heard a lot about it personally. But yeah, I've heard about them going to businesses and stuff. And I could definitely bring what you said back to them about reaching out. I'm sure, uh, our principal would love to hear that too.
So I, so I think with that, what I'm trying to say is that all the individuals who are, who are looking at traveling in this event coming up should also all put together maybe a letter back to the Director of Education saying that the school boards, we work on students throughout the Greenstone District School Board, and accommodating all those students for movement from sporting events. That's what I would recommend.
Happens every year.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it. You guys are really getting age based because that's what it seems. Awesome. Thanks. Up next we have a new report on the tiny homes subdivision. Mrs. Kraschinski, please.
So strategy number five in the town of Marathon's current, uh, corporate strategic plan is new residential development. Included as an action item in this strategy is to explore the concept of a tiny home village in former residential areas that are now vacant. Administration has been working on the concept of building a tiny home subdivision in the former trailer court area on Trailer Court Road. Over the course of the last eight months, a preliminary lot layout and servicing design brief for approximately 20 lots has been developed uh, by T B T Engineering to support this development. A portion of the funding that the town has received from the Housing Accelerator Fund has been earmarked to incent this tiny home project. Administration has advanced this project to the point of issuing a request for pre-qualification of acceptable suppliers to select a residential developer for this project to partner with the town. The request for pre-qualifications has yet to be developed, but pre-qualification is being selected to ensure appropriate experienced suppliers are chosen for the project and that the town controls the parameters and variables as it relates to construction project, products that will be utilized. Administration is seeking council to, to proceed with the request for pre-qualification. Financially, a preliminary project budget estimate has been developed by T B T at a class D level based on similar construction projects in Northwest Ontario, which includes professional fees, engineering design, field investigations and contract administration. Field project value has been estimated at 1.75 million. This amount does not include actual residential home building. This project value will be further refined as the project proceeds to a class A level. Council's options today are A authorize administration to proceed with issuing a request for pre-qualification of acceptable suppliers, or B do not authorize that request for pre-qualification. And your administration recommends that option A be selected and that as per bylaw number 1822, the C A O is hereby authorized to undertake the process and negotiations on behalf of the municipality to select a qualified preferred supplier.
Thank you for that. We have a motion. Counselor hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on Chinese Home Subdivision. After that, the administration would authorize proceed with issuing a request of the pre-qualification of acceptable suppliers for the development of the Chinese Home Subdivision. Can I move on? Counselor Lake, step by Counselor Lake. Questions? Counselor Lake.
Uh, just, uh, just a clarification for the fees and associated with getting it to, uh, considering process. Would the funding that be, that be received already cover the 1.75 roughly like what, what's been going?
It wouldn't cover all of it. It would cover a portion of it. Um, the exact numbers were, we're still analyzing the, the project plan for that housing incentive fund. Um, but certainly there's a good chunk of that would be utilized towards this project.
And are those funds tangible right now? Once we get like, you know, if it require 50% down payment, we have those funds available to pay?
So we get, we get quarterly payments through the Housing Accelerator Fund. Um, so it's likely, and of course we would come back to council with the, you know, the, the final plan. Um, it's likely that, you know, we may have to have some cash outlay through reserves and ultimately repay ourselves as that funding comes in, because it doesn't come in in one trench. It comes in, you know, over the next two to three years in quarterly payments. So that would be part of the financial plan we bring back to council. Once we have that acceptable supplier, uh, chosen, uh, through the process.
That's right.
So I, I think probably the, the, the follow-up to Counselor Lake is, so in the end, there, there's no real cost to the municipality to get this plan going because ultimately that accelerator money will, will help pay for that. Um, which I think is great. The other thing that, that just as we move forward, like I think about, um, you know, making plans and they're not super tangible, uh, do you see a way that through this process we could get, um, you know, like a, that we could put in the, whoever's going to build it to have a, a sample house built so that people could come and see it. And then obviously they would have to decide whether to build it or not. I just think having something tangible out of a project and not just a paper, uh, would be, I don't know if that's possible, but.
Yeah, certainly. More than possible. And I think it's, it's part of the reason, you know, we're, we're asking for council's approval or approval to utilize this particular process is, you know, we're able to identify, uh, you know, those types of scenarios within the, the pre-qualification. Um, and very simply, you know, and that's certainly one that I had discussions with the mayor of, of last week as well. Um, if they're not able to meet that, then they get disqualified and they don't move forward. So utilizing this process, uh, you know, through our bylaws is, is exactly why we've included it, uh, in our procurement bylaw. Um, so we control the suppliers, um, as well as control the process, um, to, to roll those particular projects out.
Anybody else? Yeah. So yeah, very well said in regards to that. There's probably three or four suppliers for what we're looking for. So they'll have all, all opportunity, opportunity to submit the request under the request proposal for the project. But they're good. And that, that's a great, uh, opportunity for us to say, yeah, all the home is part of that. And, uh, hopefully that'll offset, uh, some of the, uh, the developmental costs for that developer. If he's successful, go forward and, uh, and sell another 18 or 19 homes if that's possible.
And it may just, uh, like I know the question that the public will probably have is, uh, is it at that point that there'll be a number? For, I mean, what's great about this project is it, it creates that other level of housing cost, right? I mean, we're, we have apartments, we have, uh, good income, we have big, you know, lots of big houses that are expensive. It'd be nice to have, I think people would be looking for, you know, maybe I'm moving out of my big house, want to go into something smaller, uh, as I downsize. At what point in the process would, would we be able to go to the public and say, you know, this is what the house will cost?
That's really a good question. We've had discussions, uh, Mr. Parrish, Mr. Kraschinski and myself with, uh, the various developers. And those prices range anywhere from probably 80 to like a hundred and 30 to 40,000 onsite developed, ready to move in. But that's all depends on the request for proposal, how many they can build at one time, um, setting up a crew. All those various things can come into play. So it's about affordability. That was the big driving part of this, uh, 1.9 million dollars we got from the federal government was about affordable housing. So by us looking at tiny home village, they're five to six hundred square foot homes that people own. And yet they're affordable for a young guy coming in, a young guy, a gal, a young couple, or an elderly couple or elderly person moving from a bigger home, as you say, into a smaller facility. And, uh, and making it more affordable. It's about affordability.
Yeah. And, and certainly, you know, part of the, the pre-qualification is going to be determining those thresholds. You know, whether we say it's, you know, affordability is between 80,000 and 120,000, or we say it's 80,000 to 100, right? We're, we're going to control those parameters, right? And ensure that, you know, the project comes in, you know, on a budget that's affordable. Cause as, as the mayor indicated, that's what this project really is all about.
That's great. Yes. And then go ahead. So just, uh, just back to the mayor's original comment regarding costs, just trying to be super mindful of not incurring more expenses than, than we need to. And I know we have a good relationship with T V T Engineering. So once they're, they're, you know, we have their quote, obviously things don't always go as planned. If they, you know, come back to us, so we ran into this problem, you know, we can develop 16 lots or 14 lots at your quoted price as opposed to the desired 20, is that, will that flexibility exist as well or?
We're, we're confident that 20 is the, the proper fit there. Um, and then we're even, you know, more confident, we're going to further refine those infrastructure costs. Um, you know, from two perspectives, right? Obviously one is we advance the project, you know, when we get into more detailed design and engineering, we're going to bring that number down. And then by, you know, utilizing this method that we're asking council to approve, we're able to negotiate, right? And, and really, you know, the model we are looking at is a partnership model, right? Where, you know, somebody just doesn't come in and make money on the backs of the town of Marathon. You know, that's, it's a cost sharing initiative so that it creates the ultimate affordability for the project.
And that's one key message is affordable, right? We want to make sure we can offer the opportunity for twenty residents in our community to commit to affordable housing. Right? As we all know, housing is gone up everywhere and including Marathon. So if we can get somebody to their old place for an affordable amount of a mortgage or a loan, whatever that looks like, is where we need to be. Anything else?
That's great.
I look forward to that, so the motion clearly stated that. We are ready to go and administration will start the process once we approve this all in favor. Good, great, thank you. Thank you for that report. Up next, we have a report on the twenty twenty-four final tax levy. Come to our members, good evening, Mr. Verbal.
Evening, Mayor and Council. On April twenty-second, the twenty twenty-four budget was approved by bylaw number two zero seven six. Two weeks ago, the tax ratios for twenty twenty-four was passed by bylaw two thousand seventy-seven. Bylaw is now required to specify the tax rate by property class. The rates are attached on the, as scheduled later on the bylaw. One caveat on the education rates, the province maintained an education rate of point zero zero nine eight for properties whose payment in lieu are retained by the municipality. They are to be higher than the other properties, which is point zero zero eight eight. An example of an education tax that the municipality can keep instead of transferring to the school boards are taxes paid by Canada Post. In twenty twenty-three, council approved the write-off of a hundred forty-two dollars as the federal government did not pay the higher rate. The financial implications are outlined in the bylaw. So the options are to approve the twenty twenty-four final levy of taxes as presented or approve them with amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that bylaw two zero seven eight adopting the twenty twenty-four final levy of taxes be approved as presented.
Thanks for the report. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on twenty twenty-four final tax levy for that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting. Doubting that final twenty twenty-four tax levy as detailed in the report, move by. Council, whether it's anybody, council, like any questions to Mr. Verbal? Harry, no other questions, all in favor? Harry, thank you. Thank you for that report, sir. Up next, we have a report on the customer code of conduct policy, AD zero zero two eight. Good evening, Mr. Krasinski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Town of Marathon strives to provide exemplary service to all members of the public. We are dedicated to providing an accessible, safe, and welcoming environment for customers, visitors, and staff. The town aims to address service requests and complaints fairly, thoroughly, and in a timely manner. This policy will replace the handling unreasonable customer behavior policy. This policy has been developed to help employees determine consistent and reasonable responses to unwanted behaviors and to outline to the public which actions will not be tolerated. The need to de-escalate unwanted behaviors by customers towards town employees has been an ongoing issue in the community as well as many other communities in the wake of the pandemic. The town's frontline staff, senior leadership team, and members of council have all reported a rise in the number of instances whereby customers have demonstrated unacceptable behavior that have had a direct and negative impact on our employees. This policy outlines the following, the proper steps to follow to identify the problem, dealing with the complaint and the duties of the employee, manager, supervisor, and CAO, list of possible restrictions and overview of expectations, as well as an appeals process. There's no financial implications to this policy. Your options, A approve the Town of Marathon customer code of conduct policy, B do not approve the policy, or C approve the policy with amendments. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that policy AD zero zero two eight be approved as presented. And further, that this policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual and posted on the town's website as well as social media.
Great, thanks for the report. You have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on customer code of conduct policy, AD zero zero two eight. That the policy AD zero zero two eight, customer code of conduct policy be approved as presented. I refer that the copy of this code, AD zero zero two eight, customer code of conduct policy included in the town's policy guideline manual, move by. Up next, everybody, council, any questions? That's right.
Maybe, certainly, like, I understand if, you know, somebody goes to the golf course and starts yelling at our employees. That one, I think, is as hard as that is for the employee. It makes sense in my head. What do we do? Like lots of the stuff that I see is people saying awful stuff online. What's that boundary now between, you know, what it is we can say about people before it gets to that point of harassment or just, do we identify that in the policy that that kind of line exists?
Well, there's definitely a listing of what is unreasonable and what I think you're probably referring to is the mandatory, like, language against staff or members of council, which I know I've seen recently on Facebook. I know it's very hard, especially when it's not, if it's on our personal, you know, town Facebook, it's pretty easy to deal with. When it's not on ours, it becomes harder.
Yeah, you know, obviously, you know, social media is, you know, almost impossible to regulate. But I think what, you know, what we're doing with this policy, you know, because we certainly have seen an uptick, you know, and, you know, these unwanted types of behaviors is, you know, identifying that, you know, even though it may be in a, you know, a community members type of form, right? You know, utilizing town facilities is a privilege, right? It's not a right to use them, right? So, you know, if, you know, if it's brought to our attention, right? That, you know, there are defamatory statements and, you know, they're personally targeted. You know, we certainly have that conversation with an individual who's looking as an example to buy a membership or to utilize our facilities, right? Just because it's on, you know, social media and it's public, right? It doesn't mean people can say whatever they want about the Town of Marathon. And so I think what we're doing with this particular policy is, it's not meant to be punitive, but it certainly tightens up the language. And this is much more in line with what we're seeing other municipalities do, or, you know, some of the messaging we're seeing from AMO. You know, just to say that, you know, that unwanted behavior, it can't keep continuing because it's having a very negative effect on all municipalities in Ontario.
Certainly, it's not just a negative effect that staff is, so governance models, councils, and so staff. People feel the right to attack staff based on a policy that is driven by a council. In most cases, like we all know, we administer policies and procedures within the municipality. We ask our staff to fulfill those on their policy guideline manual and via our employee, the CAO, who works with his managers. But it's the right of the individual that they feel they have the right to criticize or abuse. And that's not right. I mean, simply, you know, we shouldn't be getting abused because there are decisions being made that you might not necessarily like. I mean, that's the frustrating part about any type of thing. Now read this, don't take it out on our staff, our employees, or anybody, have respect. If you can't have driven respect within your own household and you're showing that to your children and then people within society by putting on a public forum, that really doesn't bode well with you as becoming a proper citizen of our community, not just Marathon, in all cases. And how does that reflect on you with your own children? How is that driven by bringing your children into this world of social media and having that posted? You put your name there. Other than our site, you must put a name for a driven complaint on that. Well, people don't want to put their name. Well, if you want to have a legitimate complaint, you must raise your name on that site so that we can understand what your complaint driven by. But, you know, that's just where it's become. So I mean, this is really some more teeth within it, but you're right, we don't have any control over social media. We just can hopefully identify those real individuals that are causing havoc against all of us. And you're right, I think you said it before, Council, we put our name on the ballot, we have every right to be questioned about our role as a council member. Absolutely we do, but in a more respectful way than just getting beat up and bashed on a platform and then a staff getting attacked. And they don't come to work every day to get attacked by individuals because of a policy or procedure set up by council, so.
Well, it makes no sense to me because we're all in the same community. That's the part that just kills me is, it's not like we're a big multi-billion dollar corporation telling me what to do. We're, you know, citizens of the same town trying to make decisions that work for everybody. I just don't, I don't, I guess, sometimes understand the anger or the ability to say hurtful things without being able to come say it to somebody's face.
Absolutely.
I just, I don't know.
No, no, you don't have to be able to understand, you have to say, we drive over the same potholes, we do the same recreational facilities, we use the same facilities, we use the same recreational trails, enjoy our time over the families, walk the loop, whatever it is you do to enjoy your community. So why, you're right, why would we be any different? I mean, I'm not hiding in a, you know, a head in the sand and saying, I live here. I want to make sure I pay a decent amount of taxes for the amount of services that are provided. Whether that's police protection, fire protection, parks and records, or anything else that the municipality governs.
And I would say, like, I really appreciate that Edwin came to the meeting and followed that process, right? I mean, that's, that to me is now, if Edwin wants to say, Councilor Lake is an idiot, he has boat launches too high, at least we've had the conversation and I feel, yeah, you're very right now, because I'll I'll make, we'll make a decision after that conversation. I just think the process matters, right? And I appreciate that we saw it followed here tonight and that hopefully, before people say hurtful things, they think, oh, there is a process and we can take advantage of that.
This door has always been open for as long as I've been on council, at least my thirty years or so. And we were the only community in the province of Ontario that opened the door to the public. And I got really, I guess, scolded by the minister, municipal president, others by saying, you are crazy to open your door to the public to have them come in and talk about issues within your community. But we all sat, well, maybe our younger councillors weren't there, but Councilor, if you were there, we didn't let anybody come. Ever, for half an hour before our meetings and make any issues around with that in the community. So what do we do? We shut it down after a decade, I think we did that. But yeah, when you tell people that, I think, no, you didn't. Yes, we did. We had open door policy, always. So we're always there to listen to anybody. I met with Mr. Savage and some group of people, like anybody else. I talked to them about issues that happened in the municipality, we're all accessible. Let's have an opportunity to have a chat rather than get a beat up on social media. And taking it on our staff who really don't have any input in regards to that, they're just directing the policy procedures of governance that are set up by councils in our community. So thank you for that report, I appreciate it. Hopefully people will change their opinion and attitudes out there in the real world and we can all get along in our community. Thanks, appreciate it, all in favor? Harry, thank you. Mr. Parrish, good evening. I have an update in the verbal report on the works facility.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I thought I'd just add one item, although it wasn't on the agenda, but just to make a brief, is on Pebble Beach. We'll talk about Pebble Beach first and we'll move into the Public Works Garage. So I'm, you know, we're well aware, we have a grand opening. And you would notice the timbers were temporary there for the parking barriers, while I'm pleased to say they've arrived in Thunder Bay. So we're hoping to have a completion on that by the end of next week. And then also there'll be some painting, remaining work that was to be done at the washrooms on the doors and the stacks, so that work will be completed. So sorry, I wanted to bring that forward. And also maybe just letting you know that, you know, where we are right now, we're seeding, the trees and all the plantations are going to start. But there is a warranty period that the contractor is responsible for, so just so you guys are aware and the public is aware, there's a two-year planting completion that is under warranty and no different than the seeding, they have six months and then they'll have inspections done at thirty, sixteen, ninety days over the course of the summer to ensure that happens. And then I did get a call from resident today about, you know, the more receptacles down there. We have them, they're in, we've just pulled the concrete basis. As we, you know, we try to manage the efficiencies of concrete, we just can't buy a truckload of concrete. We just piggyback off on the healthcare of the hospital footings. So we just got our concrete in last week and those bare proof place receptacles will be added to the site. And I do want to make mention with our mayor, when he was speaking with the chief about historical plaque, that is something we've already discussed. And we will be working with our First Nation partners and come up with some language out there about a bit of a historical plaque for that location. So I just wanted to brief this on that, a little bit on that project. Regardless of the Public Works new facility, well, CGV is bang on with their schedule. They said originally it would be August twenty twenty-four and as the latest schedule received this morning, it will be handed over to the owner on August twenty-third. So just an update right now for the month of May and June, if you went by today, you'd have seen some cranes there. The lift was a seventy-seven thousand pound lift was being, starting to be erected on site. Flooring, drywall, hardware, millwork, all these items on the interior finishes. In construction, are scheduled for the month of June. And then in the month of August, that's mostly our commissioning is going to take place, so our balancing of the HVAC equipment, plumbing, installation, all the finishings, you know, because you want your flooring in, all the toilets go in and everything else. That all work will take part in August. So on the interior level, we're right on schedule. The exterior, though, in the month of June, they'll be grading as part of the contract. They're responsible for nine point one five meters from the building end to do the grading and sloping as we look at water management for groundwater. So all that would be done, there'll be painting the bollards, the cap flashing, you'll see sort of, you see the the fabric bouncing in the wind right now, that'll be all capped. The exterior signage is being installed late this week, early next week for the exterior. And you'll notice that the salt storage footings are getting ready to pour and the propane enclosure and the fencing, and the entire perimeter fencing is scheduled for June and July. So we're right on target. Once we receive, the project is complete, we're looking at staff training. So there'll be staff training and commissioning on the lift, the crane, wash bay, all the HVAC equipment. So that'll take place mid-August to the last week of August. Once we receive occupancy, August twenty-third, that's when the town forces will now take over and repurpose some of the equipment we have in our existing garage, you know, wheel balancing machine, tire changer. We have a thirty-ton press, all these items will be repositioned in that first week, or last week of August. Then we're scheduling a grand opening on September the sixth. Be mindful of people being away in August for holidays and by the time we commission our equipment on the other site. So we're looking at a grand opening scheduled for September the sixth. And then the Public Works is scheduled to begin transitioning into the facility on September the ninth. Any questions with the two projects? Nope, anybody else?
Yeah, it's a really busy time of year, I don't worry about it.
All good? Good, thanks for that, Dave, appreciate it. Up next, I have a motion on the following check runs to be approved for payments in April twenty twenty-four as well as the check restures. Accounts payable in the amount of one million eight hundred fifty-three dollars, one million eight hundred fifty-three, nine seventy-nine and eighty-nine cents. Payable in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand sixty-seven cents. Move by. Council, there's any questions of those payments? All in favor? Harry, thank you very much. And we're down on here, that bylaw number twenty-seven eight being a bylaw to adopt the final levy of taxes for the year twenty twenty-four. And for the collection of the said taxes to be read at first, second, and third time in following classes, twenty-seven day of May, twenty twenty-four, move by. Council, same by Council, any questions to that bylaw? There are no other questions, all in favor? Harry, thank you very much. And no other items for discussion prior to the adjournment, so we are going to adjourn at the hour five oh six. Yeah, move by. That's right, same by Council, thank you very much, have a good night.